Aloha, kakko. Mahalo to everyone on Facebook joining us this evening. The organization coordinating the stream is Huli PAC. And we were birthed from a shared drive to work our system by seeking Aina-based equity-focused leadership for Hawaii Island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community from Kona to Ka'au, from Kilo to Havi. Conducting our interviews tonight are Avery Kramer and Claire Mason. I think someone has some background noise, so if you guys won't mind muting yourselves while we're not speaking, just in case.
Sure.
Awesome. And I'd like to welcome LeAnn Healy, running for county council District 8. LeAnn, why don't you go ahead and take a few minutes to introduce yourself?
Aloha, mai kakko, Alexia, Claire, and Avery. Mahalenui for the invitation to connect. Very excited to be here. My name is LeAnn Healy. I am from Kailua Oahu, born and raised, but have been calling Kailua Kona my home since 2000, July 2000. So I've been very blessed to be here, serving. I'm a graduate of Kamehameha High School, Kapalama campus. Class color is pink. I know that's very important. I think we were the second class with the pink color. Then I pursued a Bachelor of Arts in Organizational Communication from St. Mary's College, where I played Division One soccer, long before UH Wahine had a team, UH Manoa had the Wahine team. I went on then to pursue a Master's of Arts in Education, I'm sorry, Master's of Education in Vocational Rehabilitation Counseling. And then completed my academic endeavors by pursuing a Doctorate of Management specializing in organizational leadership. So I've been here in Kona, working primarily in West Hawaii, but also impacting island-wide through various work endeavors and initiatives. So mahalenui for the opportunity.
Mahal, LeAnn, for joining us tonight. And I'm going to pass it off to Claire Mason for the first question.
Hi, LeAnn, thank you so much. What's a really awesome background you have? What experiences throughout all of that do you think make you qualified for elected office at this point?
That's a, that's a beautiful question. The experiences that I have are many, but I would like to ground this answer in just being raised in a home where we are committed to service. We are grounded in compassion, in aloha, in respect. My father worked in the areas of law for the state of Hawaii. My mother served as a Title I teacher for the Department of Education, working with many children who were often marginalized, underrepresented. So that's what grounds me and prepares me for this experience. In addition to that, my endeavors through my educational pursuits at St. Mary's afforded me opportunity to pursue a career in vocational education, higher education, post-secondary. So I found myself assisting students, although not in Hawaii. I worked for some time in California, which took me then to Chicago and then over to Syracuse, New York. And all the while, I'm thinking, I would like to impact the children of Hawaii. Why am I not doing this at home? But I understood along the while that I had to get that experience, where I worked my way up to coordinate across the nation with other leaders. In addition to that, I've established a healthcare practice here when I relocated home in 2000, where I advocated again for our veterans, this time, to advance their dental benefits. I organized a healthcare practice where I leveraged the master's training that I had, and I operated that as a vocational academy, affording people of Hawaii opportunity to advance their vocational pursuits, all the while connecting with leaders, which advanced me then to the county of Hawaii, working for the Research and Development Department, where I helped to coordinate an entrepreneurship program, first ever, which would help small businesses across the island, small business owners. And two other critical areas of my expertise, Blue Zones Project. I was able to leverage the social determinants of health, where we live, learn, work, and play, and to advance and put Hawaii County on the map as, as an area committed to advancing health and wellness for the people of Hawaii, for the communities of Hawaii, and also for opportunity ahead for future generations. Currently, I serve as the Director of Innovation and Transformation for a federally-qualified health center, West Hawaii Community Health Center. Serving as a senior leadership member there, I'm able to advocate, coordinate, and facilitate very important conversations that help to advance healthcare. Through COVID, we've learned that the areas of social health equity, social equity, health equity are priorities. And so with a new merger with Bay Clinic, I'm facilitating as chief strategist with that merger to bring people together. I'm a great listener. I explore solutions that are innovative. I honor the past, but we also recognize and explore solutions that can move us into the future, all the while keeping in mind keiki, tukupuna, and the future generations to come. I've got great relations with mayor and some of his directors, council members. My 22 years of experience here on Hawaii Island have blessed me with humble kupuna that have entered my life and being ha'aha', just humble in my ways, doing my work, listening, learning, and contributing. I believe that's what makes me qualified to serve as a county council member representing District 8. Mahalenui.
Thanks for sharing that. Pass it over to Avery.
All right. Aloha, LeAnn, thank you for joining us tonight.
Aloha, Avery.
So I had a question. I would like to build on some of the things you just mentioned. What measures would you propose to increase the quality of our public schools?
That's a great question. Measures that I would advance to increase the quality of our public schools. Teachers are critical. I shared that my mother was a teacher and often had very intimate connection with families, with school administration, again, from keiki to kupuna. Teacher retention, so teacher recruitment, supporting our local teachers to build a healthy economy, providing supports. And often, right, the past leaves clues in terms of what has not worked and what has worked. Yes, there have been many conversations in the past, although I haven't been intimately involved in the, in the Department of Education conversations. I know teacher recruitment and retention is critical. Critical because we have, according to the last census, 2020, Hawaii County is one of the, if not one of the, we are the most diverse in the union. And so what does that look like? My three favorite questions, what does it look like, sound like, and feel like? Working with the health center, we, we connect with Kialakehe School Districts, with Holu Aloha, Malamanakeiki, for example, the top 100 children at Holu Aloha School that are in need, children of families that English may not be a primary language. My second measure would be to explore what we can do to support teacher recruitment that would support the families where English is not a primary language. For example, we have many families and children migrating from Micronesia. We have compactor-free association families that are in need, Kostrain language, Yapis, Ponpe, Chukis, Marshallis, we have Palauan. So I'm looking for resources that can serve intimately throughout our schools. One of the discussions that comes up with the health center, because we often do work with the schools through my team of community health workers, my work happens outside the walls of the health center. Schools often call me as a resource to, to service the schools and their families around this specific area. So that's, that's a measure that I'm looking at in terms of what's our baseline? What does the budget look like in terms of affording our island resources in that regard? When we have resources that are like-minded and aligned and connected to serve families and children truly in need, then I, I think we look at closing the gap. Right now, there's a disconnect. Are we doing the best that we can to serve our children and our families? We also look at the, the GLOs. We look at what our students are able to do to perform in order to prepare them for the next step. Not all children are set out for secondary education, post-secondary educational opportunities. We have to really be the eyes and ears and listen to the needs of our keiki, look at, look at their natural talents. What educational pathways are we creating? I mentioned earlier in the introduction, my time spent pursuing work with vocational academies across the nation. To me, that's beautiful. It's genius. It's tapping into the natural talents. Thirteen, I believe, it could be more, according to Dr. Howard Gardner. Children have 13 or more natural talents. Are we providing space? Not all children learn in a classroom setting. Look at our beautiful space. Look at our Aina, place-based education. So those are the three areas that I would look at. Of course, there are a host of others, but those are the three top, based on my engagement with community, my understanding of the challenges, and my hope for the future. Mahalenui.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next question tonight is a bit more broad. What do you see as the three most pressing issues that face your district?
Oh, yes, Claire, that is a broad, this is the 30,000-foot question, right? 30,000-foot question. One thing I recognize, very obvious, in District 8, we have a host of opportunity, meaning we have airport, we have halamanui, we have affordable housing locations, we have public schools, charter schools, private schools. We have a diverse landscape. We have kukio, we have kohanaiki, we have four seasons, we have local residents in residential areas, palisades, we have liliu'kalani communities, we have Hawaiian homes. I consider all of this. And I think the three most pressing issues, first is going to be affordable housing. I say that because affordable housing is essential for our keiki. We know that keiki are leaving for opportunity, which is wonderful. We want them to succeed. But many of us would also like to see them return home to kokua. The idea being, get your, get your education, get your experience, but never forget where you came from, and when it's time to come home, you come home. Where are they going to go if they come home and there are no options? I'm not saying I'm pro-development. I'm saying we have to consider the opportunities for development of affordable housing. I know certain sections of, of District 8 are currently zoned for opportunity for affordable housing. District 8 has, has a lot of opportunity in the upcoming years to advance this, this sector. Safe homes, that now puts into question infrastructure, right? The aging infrastructure. And as I'm learning, it's been a quick learning curve for me. I've been enjoying the process, but I know at a point in time, no fault to anyone, it's my belief that those who are serving are doing the best they can with what they have. But we also find ourselves, such as myself and each of you, in our respective leadership roles, we have to recognize the facts of what, what exists. The aging infrastructure is concerning to me, reason being, before we get that affordable housing developed for opportunity for our families or keiki of the future, what does the infrastructure look like? I know at a point in time, county was challenged by a number of different factors, number of different forces, whether it be financial, whether it be resources, whether it be opportunity. And so we've got to look at our aging infrastructure, which is tied to water. You know, this is just one example. And again, I'm learning as I'm connecting in community in this, in this endeavor. Without the infrastructure, we cannot achieve safe, affordable housing that's done in a pono way. Pono meaning bringing the stakeholders to the table, which is very important to me and one of the reasons why I'm stepping into this space. I'd like a seat at the table. I don't have all the answers. I'm certainly not perfect, but I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to learn, and I'm willing to think of solutions, not to fix it all, but to take the first step, which could lead to additional steps in the future. You know, the third, the third challenge I'm going to say is, is, I'm going to throw two in here. Building a healthy economy. And I really would love to see West Hawaii equipped with a new hospital. That's my dream. That is my absolute dream, working in the healthcare sector. I've, I've witnessed firsthand the need for better resources to serve our challenged communities. With the opportunity of a hospital, I see a thriving economy. I see an expanded facility, which we could bring in specialists, train our local talent, provide space and opportunity, which would, which would afford economic opportunity. And, and my platform moving into this District 8 opportunity, it centers in health, and, and health is at the core. And I look at three arenas, health of our people, and when I say people, that's keiki, tukupuna, perhaps the keiki that haven't even been thought of yet, but we know they're on their way. I think of a healthy community. What do our streets look like? Safe routes to school, walkable streets, access to water, access to, to playgrounds, safe places for all people to enjoy, and then certainly a healthy economy. So those would be my, those would be my 3.5, 3.5.
That's wonderful. Thank you, LeAnn.
Mahalenui, Claire.
Over to you, Avery.
LeAnn, the last response opened up a lot of different directions I want to go, but I only have one question to ask. So let me build on a little bit more on, on affordable housing. So homelessness is a problem statewide, and we certainly have our share of it here on Hawaii Island. What would you do to kind of address this issue?
What would I do to address homelessness, specific to District 8, or West Hawaii, or Hawaii County?
Yes.
Okay. We know this is a challenging area. We know we've seen the numbers of homeless individuals increase in the last three years, let alone five and 10 years. When I think of homelessness, I actually invite into that space or that thought, unsheltered. We have unsheltered individuals that need additional support, meaning, and this comes from my, my, my work in, in the health sector, we witnessed firsthand unsheltered individuals that are homeless that suffer from mental illness. We know that firsthand. So if we explore the topic of building affordable homes, or homes to, to house individuals that are homeless, is that really addressing the issue at the core? I think it's providing the very first step into many steps to come. So I have unsheltered individuals which need additional support. This may include mental health support. This may include therapeutic intervention, excuse me. This may also include management or teaching of vocational training or individual living skills. It may require around-the-clock support. We don't know until we meet the individual that is unsheltered and learn about his or her needs. Now let's introduce the homelessness. We have individuals who may not be able to afford their rent due to job loss. They're healthy individuals. They find ways to feed their keiki. They may have a vehicle. I share these detailed examples because this is how I make sense of the world and, and, and I'm always cautious about semantics, right? Which is why you say homeless, homelessness, Avery, and, and my brain instantly, I have different arenas to honor everybody that I view needing support. So we have a family that can't afford rent. They may need transitional housing to get back on their feet. One great example is Uluvini. We work closely with Uluvini, transitional housing. They have a family assessment center. Families connect with Uluvini and are able to acquire skills. They are able to acquire support. The idea being residing onsite for, I'm not sure, because I haven't been privy to the details of, of the contract of the living situation. But point being, if we provide a space with additional support at different levels, we could potentially explore opportunities for addressing homelessness, helping individuals that, that have different challenges. We know homeless individuals come in all ages. Kupuna are high on my list of prioritizing when I consider the work that I do as a, as a, as a leader with West Hawaii Community Health Center, or just as, as an individual. To see homeless, kupuna, is disturbing. Our ideas to address homelessness is not going to be solved overnight. It's going to be looking at these examples that I've shared. I see the timer from Alexia, so I'm going to wrap that up by saying, there are many different challenges, and we need to be at the table to understand the needs of the individual and the organizations or places of where the homeless are coming from, in addition to our local homeless individuals.
Thank you.
Mahalenui, Avery.
So, LeAnn, one thing that you mentioned earlier when we were talking about some of the more major issues facing your district, you've mentioned that it doesn't necessarily mean being pro-development. And so one thing that I'm curious about is your views on land use and development and which, which directions we should be taking our, our land use development.
Yes, yes. So part of, thank you, Claire. This is another challenging question, challenging question. There are solutions, but again, coming to the table and listening to what has been established. So looking at the facts, what do we know to be true? What I've learned to be true is that there's a general plan that is conducted and developed about once every 10 years. That plan is created for the purpose of being our guide, right? We have to, as a council member, I'm not yet, but if afforded the opportunity, we have to, along with mayor and his team, we're guided by the general plan. And so when we talk about land use, we understand that there are certain lands that have been zoned. They are already zoned for specific use. A good percentage, 40-plus percent of our land on Hawaii Island is, is ag land. In terms of the urban, right? In terms of the urban zoned areas, I believe it's Chapter 11 of the county code. I believe it's Chapter 11. Chapter 11 states that when, when the land has been rezoned, and I'm still learning this language, but my understanding is that when the land has been rezoned under Chapter 11 for development, 20% of that opportunity to develop must meet the needs of affordable housing, must meet the needs of being affordable, attainable, and achievable. There's another definition with affordable. What does that, what does that look like when we quantify it in numbers, right? Because I've been doing a lot of qualitative, experiential talking. So to quantify that, my understanding, what I've learned is, let's say we have a husband and wife, a fireman and maybe a teacher. Combined, 30% of their wages will go to a mortgage, plus utilities, that would be affordable. So when we look at land use, this is just one example of understanding, according from the general plan, that has been vetted, that has been brought to community for their input in helping to guide the development of this general plan on how we move forward. We're going to explore solutions based on that, that general plan. I know the general plan is up for approval or, or is going to be blessed soon through the council, maybe in the next few years. But when we look at land use, there's a host of opportunities to look at. We look at lands for open space, and so we can have public access, safe places. We look at land that is with the state land conservation. We've got to look at lands that are being rezoned. We've got to consider all of these factors with our land, and we know our land will often guide us as well. We know this place will often guide us. And so listening to, to others in terms of what has been deemed appropriate for urban development, what kind of development, those are the conversations we have to have in peeling the layers to understand what has been set before us. What do we understand to be true? What may need to be rezoned so that we are approaching the solution through a pono lens, through a pono process, so that no mistakes are made, spending that time upfront, so we move forward the best that we can with what we have and what we know to be true. Thank you, Claire.
A follow-up on that, maybe a yes or no, short answer. Do you support the rezoning of agricultural lands to residential land use?
Do I support the rezoning of agricultural land use? The agricultural land use. I support smart development. So when it comes to the agricultural land rezoning, you know, I would caution, I would caution, meaning I would, I would step into that conversation carefully. My approach to exploring, again, I would go back to my, my Lokahe triangle, looking at the health of people, the health of economy, the health of community. According to the general plan, I know that there are five core areas that help to build a healthy economy. One of those areas is ag land, diversified ag. We, we have a number of individuals that are small business development owners or entrepreneurs through their use of ag land. We have a number of different opportunities there to support local families. So I would step into that with caution. I'm open to exploring. Yes, I would have to learn more. Before we make any swift changes, I would want to learn more. Location, who's involved? Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Mahalenui, Alexia. Thank you, Claire.
All right. Let's, let's kind of keep it going on the discussion around agriculture. What would be your definition of food security and sovereignty in Hawaii? And if you could maybe describe programs that, that you would maybe try to initiate or get involved with if you were elected?
Sure. Thank you, Avery. That's a great question. So food security, grow our own, grow our own. We have such amazing resources, right? We have amazing fish in the sea. We have, it's like our refrigerator, right? We, we can access and be blessed and enjoy. We have opportunity to plant our own. We have opportunities through, you know, one example, I, I had an opportunity with, I'm going to share their name, I hope they don't mind, the Kahone'ohana. Jessie and Kim Kahone'ohana have been amazing. And this opportunity came through a connection, Niho and Maki, through the Donkey Mill Art Center. We had an opportunity to visit one of the food systems of Kamehameha. In 1812, there was a famine, and King Kamehameha had asked, right? Voluntold, asked, encouraged, ordered everybody to participate in working the Aina to prepare for future generations so that we will not starve. I believe there are opportunities, there are programs, whether it be working with local schools, whether it be teaching our children how to plant, just the basics, taking small steps. The houka'i that we shared with Jessie and Kim Kahone'ohana allowed us to recognize the revitalization of food systems, recognizing how when we take care of the land, the land will take care of us. So what can't we do? What we need to do is pause, find out, become educated, and get involved, right? Turn our hand over, participate, engage. We have a host of opportunities to do that, a number of different ways. One, I mentioned our schools. I do a lot of work with villages of La'opua. We look at different opportunities for aquaculture. We look at opportunities for growing kalo. We, we look at opportunities for taking care of our Aina. And sometimes it's just that little piece that we have at our hale, at our home, starting there. But unless we teach the skills and pass that knowledge on to understand what we can do here with our, with our just amazing, rich opportunities that we have around us, we will, we won't get there. I believe we can become self-sustaining, but we have to educate first, participate second, share third, and we start small, and then we can scale up. We can scale up. And there's a host of opportunities available to us. And there's a host of opportunities available to us. Thank you so much Avery.
Mahalenui.
So our next question, it has something to do with ag, but also could be going in other directions as well. One thing we've noticed through COVID is that our economy, when dependent on tourism, is not very dependable. And so in what ways do you envision a diversified economy? And what solutions might you bring to the table?
Sorry Claire, can you, is this specific to tourism? I, I heard a different, I heard a few different angles, sorry about that.
In terms of a diversified economy, what, what options or solutions might you bring to the table as opposed to maintaining a economy reliant on tourism?
Yes, yes. What opportunities that, what might we have to, to create a more diverse economy? Supporting our entrepreneurs, our local entrepreneurs is definitely something that is important to me. I believe we have, I refer to it as untapped talent and potential that when tapped and when unearthed can unleash a beautiful web of, of, of economic development. We also have places, Alexia, where, where you and your, your team work over at Nelha and, and in Oteka. We have opportunities to, to share and transfer the knowledge of innovation and, and just raw talent. What happens when we marry the two? Introduce into that web, our Palamanui campus. Are we offering programs that would enhance that talent development skill of that individual that just needs additional support? Yes, we have Small Business Development Center. Yes, we have DCCA, but I'm talking about helping to unearth that raw human talent that individuals can share their gifts, whether it is growing kalo, whether it is making jewelry, whether it is producing and selling coffee or making local jams or, you know, whatever that outcome, that product might be, is to support a healthy local economy. That's important because we can sustain, we can build within. We don't always have to look far beyond our, our aina. We don't have to look, we, we often should look within, start with self. Sometimes I understand that's not easy to do. But when we recognize that talent, why not encourage that individual to learn a little more? Or connect that individual with a resource, building those relationships? And so COVID has, has separated us, right? We're now in a phase where we're slowly connecting again. My hope is that as we build connection in community, we foster these conversations to explore how we can build a healthy economy, how we can diversify. We may not able to, we may not be able to get too far away from things that have historically held our economy together, such as the, the tourism, such as Kaileua Village Town and the redevelopment, such as some of our forestry ag lands or diversified agricultural. But we can better understand the needs of our community members and how we can foster their aspirations to participate and build. I believe it's a time of innovation utilizing the gifts and talents of others. Thank you so much.
All right. I want to shift over a little bit. Speaking about the native Hawaiian community, what do you think is the biggest pressing issues facing native Hawaiians right now?
That's a powerful question Avery. That's a powerful question. My dream and my vision is for native Hawaiian community to be healthy. To be healthy, to be equipped, to, to, to have safe places. So what does that, what does all that mean? This is a, this is a very big question, broad question. I'm concerned about the health and wellness of native Hawaiian communities. I am part Hawaiian, my mother is Hawaiian, half Hawaiian, half Chinese. My father is Welsh. We know that mental health and wellness through COVID has been extremely challenging. I'm going to speak specifically to our opel and our haumana. I'm going to talk about the youth that are amongst the native Hawaiian communities that are not here. Not here, meaning we have within the native Hawaiian population and other Pacific island groups, youth that are taking their own lives. To me, that is absolutely, no, that, that cannot happen. So when you, when you ask me that question, I instantly go to our youth. Earlier I referenced the opportunity to, to house our youth, specifically for native Hawaiian youth and families. The health and wellness, the vibrancy, the talent, the contribution, having a seat at the table, making informed decisions to build a prosperous future, to participate. I've done work with many of the leaders at villages of La'ia Pua, worked with families and children. My goal is to create, assist in the creation of a vibrant community. What are the needs? What are the opportunities? If we are losing our youth at a faster rate amongst the native Hawaiian youth? And, and this comes from a study, I, I serve as a board member with Vibrant Hawaii. We, we recently explored a study looking at the number of youth that are taking their lives. Native Hawaiian Pacific Island ranked the highest across other cultural groups in the state of Hawaii. To me, that's bothersome. There are a number of different ways I would offer to answer this question, but given the time limit, and I would be happy to explore this. But my passion is making sure that all the work that we do to build a hi, a healthy, vibrant, safe Hawaii is available for youth. What, what are the youth not getting that they need? And if they need, they will be here to participate in helping to build a prosperous, vibrant, safe, healthy Hawaii or community. So my hope and my prayer is that the health and wellness, specifically for native Hawaiian individuals, is prioritized. And not just talking about nutritional health, right? Whole body health, right? Our connection to place, our connection to kupuna, our understanding of our worth, of our development. We have amazing youth that can olelo. Huleka is one great example, right? He is a great example. He olelos. I am learning, I am one that is participating in learning, but we have youth that are reconnecting with culture through language. They matter. That to me is exciting. We have Hawaiian immersion schools that create space that unleash that vibrancy, that unleash that talent. When we build confidence in a keiki and then we water that keiki metaphorically, what happens? What can't we do? What can't we do? So I would focus on the health and wellness, holistic health and wellness in building, in, in building our native Hawaiian communities up. We each have kuliana around that.
Terrific, thank you.
Mahalenui.
Thank you Leanne, that was a wonderful response. Another issue facing the native Hawaiian community is the DHHL land process. I'm wondering both your general views and also whether you support the blood quantum requirement in order to qualify for DHHL lands?
Right, so Department of Hawaiian Homelands, yes, there are many difficult conversations. There are many challenges ahead. We have to come to the table and explore. Times have changed, situations have changed, blood quantums have changed. Is that fair? And, and this is where going back to past records, researching, understanding what may have been right for, for the times of the past may not be relevant to, to current day or future day. What, what might that look like? I understand that the waitlist is excessive. It's, there's urgency to get native Hawaiians housed in safe places. There are challenges ahead. Besides the blunt quantum, besides the waitlist, we look again, there's that aging infrastructure. The water wells, we cannot build without access to, to water. My hope is that conversations that move forward, which address blood quantum, which, which address housing native Hawaiians on Hawaiian homelands, affording the opportunities for advancement, for rehabilitation. My hope is to find solutions that allow for that to happen. But how do we get there? We come to the table, we have, I think it's Albert Einstein, and I'm, no fault to anyone, but there's a quote that I'll reference here. We can't solve the world's problems with the same kind of thinking that, that may have created it. And, and I'm not pointing blame to anyone. I'm just asking everyone involved, all stakeholders, let's pause, let's explore the language. Yes, it is layered in systems. Yes, it is layered in, in policy. Yes, it is layered in, in challenging scenarios, any way that you look at it. But until we pause, come together and take a look at that, how might we correct it to, to create space? That's where I believe the courage comes into play. That's where I believe if awarded the opportunity and blessed to be council member, District Eight, I might facilitate some of those difficult conversations, asking with a humble heart, asking with, with grace and dignity in terms of exploring, might we look at the language? What might need some course correction? And what might need, what might we consider now with new language? Back to the rezoning, you know, over time to keep up with, with the growth, we know it's coming. What are we doing now to prepare for that? What are we doing today to help advance the challenges around, around blood quantum, around waitlist, around getting individuals in homes? What are we doing about it? We have to come together. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Avery, last question this evening, if you want to close it out.
All right. Thank you Alexia for letting me ask one more. Okay, let's close it out on this one, Leanne. What, what do you think? Do you think the current county council is effective? And if yes, why? And if no, what could be improved?
Is it, is it, do I think the current county council is effective? Or what do I think?
Well, you know, for, for, for me, no, no, for me, this is about, I mean, politics is, I, I've never been in politics and I, I'm not sure I ever will. It seems like a very difficult space to work in. And I'm always curious what would drive someone into it. But here you are. And, and I'm just kind of, I really want to understand, and I think others would want to understand, what is really driving you to, to go down this path? And?
Got it, got it, thank you so much. So what's driving me to go down this path is simple, it's caring for my community. It's having a seat at the table. It's, it's being a good listener to understand what has gone on. But more importantly, what did I hear and what might I contribute to advance a conversation? The minute we stop engaging or operating in silos, where do we get? What are we able to do? We, we, we stop a process that further delays the advancement, the vision, the aspiration of, of a healthy place. It's my belief as an individual, I will bring to that seat the best of who I am, integrity, collaboration, my ability to listen, my ability to work things out, my ability to facilitate difficult conversations, to make informed decisions. I appreciate teams that work together. We don't always have to agree, but we certainly, I would hope, respect one another if we agree to disagree. So all that to say is, I believe in a council that is able to work together to understand the needs, respective needs of each district, which will vary. They will vary, but are we willing to listen to one another? Are we able to engage, to understand, to, to explore solutions? To prioritize, to also engage with mayor? I've connected with mayor on a number of different projects in the past years. My ability to build relationships built on integrity, built on getting things done for the right reasons, doing our research, knowing where we, where, where we are headed, but understanding the work that has come before us. I believe in teams that work together and there's this team development process. We go through forming, we get to know who are you, who am I, where are you from? What's your intention? We then enter storming, right? We start to, you, we have different priorities, we have different focus areas. Then we get to understand, oh, that's what's important to you. And this is what's important to me. We get out of storming, we get into the norming phase. We normalize, we understand protocols, we understand routines. And then we get to perform, right? That's just human behavior. That's the social science element that I bring to the work, that I will bring to county council in understanding the needs, in respecting my colleagues, in advocating for the needs of District Eight, advocating to mayor. If I work with mayor, my understanding is he works with his team. There's that respect. But it won't happen unless one is willing to listen and contribute in productive, positive and purposeful way.
Thank you Leanne. And that will be our last question tonight. Big mahalo to Leanne Healy, everyone, for joining us this evening and sharing many of your inspiring ideas and manao with all of those watching on Facebook tonight and those who may be watching later. And Claire and Avery, thank you so much for joining and asking these very thought provoking questions. And just to go back to Huli Pack for a second, a quick plug. At Huli Pack, we're building something that the political establishment in Hawaii County may have never seen before, a slate of pono candidates. And so if you feel inclined to support candidates that are on this pono path to support aina-based candidates, please feel free to visit our website at hulihi.com where you can make donations to contribute to candidates that we will, we will later be endorsing. But that is everything for tonight and thank you for joining, everyone.
Mahalenui.
Mahalenui.
Ahuiho.